Good evening. At this time, we need to call the November 6, 2012, meeting of the Yukon City Council to order, and the Yukon Boy Scouts Troops 807 will present the colors this evening. So if you would stand for that and then remain standing for the invocation, please.
Audience attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Color guard post the colors. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard about face. Audience, may we be...
If you'd rise for the invocation, please.
Father, we are thrilled to be Americans. It's a joy to salute this flag. It's a joy, Lord, to stand in line today, even if it was for quite a while, for a wonderful privilege. So we're kind of caught up in that, Lord, and we know a lot of it because you've allowed that, and we thank you for it. Just want to take a moment, Lord, though, to remember you're bigger than all of that. You're bigger than any kingdom that man has ever established. So just influence us, Lord. Work through our consciences that we use to vote with today. Work through our consciences as we spend time together. I thank you for each one that is on this council and ask God for your peace and blessing and discretion and that the very conscience of your Spirit would work through them, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Troop 807, for presenting the colors. And Ron Bressmussen from the Christ Church here in Yukon, thank you, sir, very much. Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gerba.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Opitz.
Here.
At this time, I believe there's a presentation for the healthy communities in Cinegraph.
Yep. Are you going to accept that?
Yes, you should. Oh, I should.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, I'm Tracy Strater with the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust, and I have Terry Klein with me. He's the Commissioner of Health and our State Secretary of Health and Human Services. We're very excited to be here tonight and to recognize the work you all have done to make your community healthier. We have a check here today, upside down, for $8,000. It, I understand, it won't actually fit through the mails through the night deposit slot at the bank, but we're happy to present this to you today for the work you've done. We know that all of these environmental changes and policy changes that you all are making will really advance health in Yukon, and so we appreciate your leadership, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Klein here.
So let me just echo Director Strater's comments and congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the City Council for demonstrating such great leadership, improving the health of your residents in Yukon. We all recognize that a stronger, healthier community produces a stronger workforce. We know that healthy students learn better and perform better, and all of that makes for a stronger community economically. So we want to congratulate all of you in terms of having tobacco-free properties, passing ordinances that actually support and promote the farmers' markets that you have throughout the community, so people can actually be connected and access fruits and vegetables and all the things we know that make for a healthier community. So congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
And I understand you all have already completed your project. Is that...
Yes, we have.
So you've got...
The early warning or the traffic control signs at the two grade schools.
For the two schools and connecting to the parks. So congratulations, that's great effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much for coming out. It is, it's important to me that we become more and more healthy. I know that we listen to the governor, and she talks about that we spend over a billion dollars a year on preventable type of illness associated with, I think, diabetes and smoking. So that's what I was, someone was here earlier from the high school paper, and I was explaining to them how important it is, and just a little bit at a time. And we've slowly started this process, and over now, the course of a couple of years, we've improved our community with the smoke, no smoking in the parks, made a couple of school zones safer for the kids by encouraging people to go to the parks, the new flashing signs over by Sheedec and Parkland Schools. So those are a couple of the examples that they're talking about. So thank you all so much for encouraging communities and allowing us to be involved, and it's a great program for the city, not just for our community, but for our whole state. Thank you all so much for being here this evening.
We hope to be back next year with a bigger check.
Well, I hope, yes, yes. Upside down or sideways, we'll take your money. Thank you.
Well spoken.
The next item on the agenda is the visitors' section. That's the opportunity for people who would like to discuss an item that is not on the council with the council this evening. So if there's a non-adjented item that you would like to discuss with the council, if you would come forward to the podium, state your name, your address, and your business, please. Any visitors? Visitors? Thank you. At this time, we will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one I, item one A on the YMA consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 16th, 2012, and B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $18,371.59. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 16th, 2012, B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $818,933.52, C, consider and approve Resolution Number 201211, a resolution concerning bridge inspection responsibility by local government for compliance with national bridge inspection standards, bridge inspection contracts from April, April 2013 to April 2016, and D, setting the date of their next regular council meeting for November the 20th, 2012, 7:00 p.m., in the council chambers at the Centennial Building, 12 South, 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have a question on item C.
Mr. Gerba.
I'm looking at the choices that we had, and, you know, what we chose was to select one of the pre-qualified engineering firms. I'm kind of curious how, how much that costs annually to do those inspections and how many we do annually. Robbie?
Yes. The city of Yukon has 20 bridges that are inspected every two years, and I believe we have two bridges they inspect once a year. And the state will pay 80% of the cost, and Yukon pays 20%. Generally, I believe it's $300 per bridge to be inspected, and that's required by the federal government. Any, any bridge over 20 feet is inspected every two years.
Who's doing the inspection now?
The same company.
Okay.
Does that include the...
Mr. McCarron, other discussion?
Does that also include the I-40 bridges, the whole complex?
No, sir. These are, no. These are just our local roads. These do not include state highway or through the city or I-40. They're, they're inspected by the state as part of their inspection program.
Is there a list of those inspections somewhere?
Yes.
Kind of, okay, that we keep? I guess I'd like to see that at some point in time for where the 20 bridges are.
Well, they will be coming in the next two weeks to do the, the bridges that are inspected once a year, the two bridges I just mentioned, and then next year about this time, they'll come and they will inspect all 20 again. But yes, we do have a file that they have given us from the last inspection that...
Could you provide a summary file to the councilman as to what the 20 bridges are?
Sure.
You know, and where they, where they are? I just, I'd like to know where they all are, so...
Well, what we, yes, and we're going to, as part of our interview process, we asked what we would get after they were done, and after they do, the two bridges this time, they are going to take time to give us a map. They're working in PDF form, and so we'll get with them and make sure they get that done.
Okay. On the report that you get, is there a evaluation of each bridge and its current status and, you know, and all of them are up to snuff right now, or they are not, or...
That's correct. The, the program that ODOT uses that generates the report, they, each bridge has a sufficiency rating between zero and 100, and so that, that is, that is on the report.
So all of those are currently in compliance? Is that what you're saying, all 20 of them?
That's correct, and when they, when they come and do an inspection, when they get done, they will come and meet with Arnold, I, and Grayson. If they found anything that needs corrected, we will take care of it. We've done that in the past. We'll, we have Brewer Construction, who has our annual contract, they can do all that work. But for the most part, our bridges are in, are in good, good condition.
Mr. Opitz. I've got my answer. Okay.
Any other discussion?
No, I think just...
Mr. Vaughn, did you have...
Thank you.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item two is the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Klein is here this evening from the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Klein.
Good evening, City Yukon Council and our visitors. And it's rather pleasant tonight to see the schoolkids here, schoolchildren here on the class project, and that's good. Glad to see you guys getting involved.
I'm Russell Klein, Chairman of the Yukon Board of Adjustment. I've been on the board for the last eight years and chairman for the past six years. I would like to introduce our, our other council members. Ward one is represented by Sherri Houston, Ward two by Rena Holland, Ward three by Joe Horn, Ward four, Russ Klein, and then the at-large ward, Buddy Carpenter. We have two main duties that we perform as the Board of Adjustment here in Yukon. I'll hit them real quick. The one, first one, probably most important, is an administrative review. That's to hear and decide appeals where it is alleged there is an error in the enforcement of a city of Yukon Code of Ordinance. The second one is to authorize such variances from the terms of this, from the terms of this ordinance and will not be contrary to the public interest so that the spirit of this ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare secured, substantial justice done. Such variances may be granted upon a ruling or a finding of the Board of Adjustment. And there's four main areas...
Mr. Klein, it's, you need to talk into the microphone because you're being recorded for the meet, meeting purposes. Sorry.
All right. Okay. Sorry, guys. The, the four main items, it's, it's really important, and I'm going to read them off. It's going to take a couple extra minutes, but we have enough people here that are visitors that maybe they need to realize what the Board of Adjustments really is all about. There are an extraordinary exception conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in question because of the size, shape, and topography of the property. The second one is the application of this ordinance to this particular piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship not self-imposed by the owner or the developer. Another item, and the third one, is such conditions are peculiar only to that particular piece of property involved. And then the fourth item is relieved if granted, may not cause substantial detriment to the good public, to the public good, or impair the purposes and extent of this zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan, provided, however, that no variance may be granted for the use of the land, building, or structure that is prohibited by the ordinance. And, and an example of this would be like if a person wanted to put a storage shed in their backyard, or a certain percentage that you have to have available in the backyard, that would be a variance request. We would act on it, look at the property, see what percentage is still there, and then make a judgment. We would also tour the area to make sure that it was not going to be a cumbance to the looks and appearances of the, of the residential area. In preparation for tonight's meeting, we have a report that's been presented to the council. The first part of the report is a long-term written-out report which shows each one of our meetings. We've had five meetings this year that's in the report. We had one last night, and then we have one scheduled for December. But yeah, so that gives you a quick rundown, and it talks about the various ordinances that people have asked for a variance of. There's two pages of that. It shows the vote, and it shows whether it was approved or disapproved. Last night was interesting, and we had a single item, but it got protracted out to about an hour long, and we had three different ordinances and ended up with two different votes. And it was one of the first times in a long time that we didn't have a unanimous vote on it, but the, the request was approved in the final analysis. The other part of the report is, I, we have a tabular calendar, calendar year Board of Adjustment Agenda items, and again, it shows what each month that we've met and the particular area of our codes and ordinances that was acted upon. And then the last page, everyone likes it, is the colorful pie chart. And again, it shows that we have had five meetings. I said that we had one last night, and that one dealt with private road easement, a split lot, split lot parcels, and a frontage area. So sometimes the meeting can get rather complex. And then, as I said, we have one scheduled for December. Without going through and naming off these, does any of the council members have a question concerning the report?
Questions?
Questions? Okay, then, in, in closing, I'd like to acknowledge my Ward Four Councilman, Mike McCarron, and thank him for retaining me as a board member. You know, I appreciate it very much, and I enjoy this opportunity to serve my community. And lastly, our report that you have that, that I worked off of was prepared by the Community Development Office. Mitch and Scarlett did a fantastic job in putting it together. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We appreciate your service.
Thanks.
Yeah, John.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, too. I want to thank you for your service, Russ. I, you know, the reason you're there is because you do a good job, and it was recognized by people who were there a long time before I got here. I appreciate all of the time, service, and the effort that you put forth.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
The next item, any other reports? The next item is three, and that's consider nominating and selecting an appointee to the Yukon Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors from within the current city council as specified in the chamber bylaws. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Rick Opitz.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
One thing I might ask is that, would that be considered one year at a time, or what's the length of term?
You're signing up for life, Rick.
That's what I was concerned about.
Kind of like marriage, until death do you part.
That, the term, I believe, on the chamber board is a three-year term for most members anyway, and, I mean, for what it's worth, I, I would think, and this is just my, my humble opinion, that you have four years left on this post. So you, you will actually have a year to spare.
I don't think as a council...
Hold on, guys. Let's, Mr. Sigler... I might suggest that in May of each year, that maybe this item come up after we've had an election, maybe have a new council members, or a new, the, the council may be constituted differently. So I might suggest, just as a matter of policy, at the second meeting in May each year, that this election be held from among the members of the council.
Geez, you just really got to complicate things, don't you, Mike?
I do. If it were easy, anybody could do it.
Get that in the minute.
Okay. Any other discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
I'm not sure I said that was number four, but I know I didn't say number five because there's not one, so... So from item four to item six, is that right? Item six, city managers' report, information items only, please.
We had been anxiously awaiting the delivery of our new garbage trucks, which had been promised to us in late October, early November. However, in mid-October, we began hearing reports that that delivery date had been delayed. The reasons for the delay were that Mack truck, which, these are Mack cabs and chassis, that they had been delayed in delivering the trucks to the Canadian manufacturing firm by almost two months. And then, in that timeframe, the, I guess it would be Parliament of, of Canada passed a law limiting the number of hours that can be spent on the production line, which, in fact, lengthened the amount of time that it's going to take for us to get the trucks. We now are told that the trucks will be delivered by March of this year. Very disappointing, not, and especially disappointing whenever you look at the fact that we're out of control. There's, you know, we've already, we've already been waiting close to a year to get this done, and now it's, we're just still waiting. So Bill is, in his capacity as the Director of Sanitation Services, is looking at ways that we can fill the six-month gap with things that we had anticipated doing after we received the new trucks. Now we're looking at those items that can be brought forward, put into the system as it is now, and see if we can make a good utilization of the time that we have. The second, the second thing I'd like to talk about, and Conrad's already scooped me on this item, but we received an adjustment in our August collections for the sales tax-free holiday related to the start of school. We did receive an additional amount of funds, just over $30,000. I think the, the important thing to look at there is that our month-to-month increase over last year now is at 10.48%, and that takes our year-to-date cumulative to 8.35%. So very good news that we received on sales tax. The other thing is that I wanted to go through, this is for Jan and all of the Parks and Rec Bunch, it is wall-to-wall between now and the end of the year. But just to give you a little snapshot, we've already had Spooksville, Mummy &amp; Son, Masquerade, and the Spooky Senior Social. We, in fact, this last weekend, we had the Seventh Annual Patriot Project with over 600 people representing Southwest Covina. Students, parents, grandparents, teachers, everybody showed up to work in, in the park complex, doing everything from painting and planting, landscaping, tile setting, putting up Christmas trees, spreading playground chips, and much, much more. And Mayor, I think you also participated in that event as well. Also, the Pumpkin Harvest Craft Festival was held in conjunction with the Maple Fry Library, and great success, I am told. Very, very pleased. And then on November the 17th, the much-anticipated opening of Christmas in the Park. It will also include not only the lighting of all the lights in the park, four and a half million lights, but it will also have Chill Your Cheeks 5K Run, Jingle Walk, and the Kris Kringle Carnival. I'd also point out that coming this weekend starts the sale of tickets for Sounds of the Season to be held on Thursday, December the 13th, at the Fine Arts Center. So lots of activities going on between now and the end of the year. And I, I, we had the opportunity between meetings to go to the Oklahoma History Center, and Doug and Sarah and I went down there, and it's amazing what you can see about Yukon. And Sarah had taken on the task of reading the minutes and trying to come up with a roster of mayors and councilmen, board members, dating all the way back to our incorporation in 1901. But I have started talking to you about a Yukon moment. This one might not be quite as humorous as some of the others, but in May of 1904, the Town Board ordered that all males between the age of 21 and 50 and had lived in the Oklahoma Territory for 30 days, and the town of Yukon for 10 days, were required to do four days of labor on streets and alleys, or provide a substitute, or pay $4 to the street commissioner. So we, the Town Board of Yukon instituted its own form of draft dating all the way back to 1904. With that, Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Great report, great report. Next item is seven. That's new business, no new business this evening? Council discussion, Mr. Opitz.
I've got a few things here that I wanted to visit about, but one of the things I, I heard Robbie mention just a while ago, that, like, on the bridges, that they had Brewer Construction, and I know we use Brewer Construction for a lot of emergencies and things, but do we let those bridges out for bid, or...
No, these, these bridges we have are existing bridges that we have had for some time. The last bridge that we constructed was the 11th Street Bridge over the North Canadian River, and yes, that was let out for bid by ODOT and built, I can't remember the name of the company, I'm sorry, but yes.
The water tower, the one out on West Vanamit there, looks like they're almost completed with it. Looks like they've done a fabulous job of inside, outside, and the cleanup around there looks really, really good. And... And I know Arnold's had a lot to do with that. My compliments to him. And with all the events and everything we have here in Yukon that our city manager just named off and the events that we've got coming up, what better place to live than Yukon, Oklahoma? So whatever you do, don't forget to shop Yukon. That's all, Mayor.
What an excellent representative for the chamber. You are, you are a shining star and we know that we now have a good representative from the council. Mr. Smith, top him, please.
Well, to echo Rick just a little bit, this is a wonderful time to live in Yukon. And I think we should all take part in as many events as we can. Fellowship among people is, is one of the best things that we can, that we can share. More so than just our, our own enjoyment of all that's going on, I, I would like to ask that this time of year, that everybody try to do something for someone else. Economy being what it is, there are gonna be those families that are, that are struggling, having a difficult time this year. Some will come forward and they'll, they'll approach our local charities and, and ask for help. There, there are always gonna be those that for pride or whatever reason are not gonna do that. They, they might be your neighbor, might live across the street from you, might go to church with you. Try to take note, pay attention. There are those that are gonna need help. And I would just ask that, living where we live, being the kind of people that we are, not just Oklahomans, but from Yukon, that we all step up and try to do something for someone else during this holiday season.
Amen.
And that's all, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Gerber?
Speaking of doing something, I just wanted to thank the Boy Scouts for coming and doing a great job with Flag today. Great job, guys. All the students for showing up today and getting involved in your government and all the citizens out there with their I voted stickers on. I mean, to me, it's really cool that you guys are getting involved this early in your government. A lot of kids, a lot of your peers don't know what's going on in government. And the more you know, the better citizens you guys are gonna be. So I think that's, that's what makes Yukon so fantastic is involvement and citizens that just kind of know what's going on. So I think, I appreciate you guys doing that and I applaud you for it. And last but not least too, thanks so much for the, the grant for Tracy and Terry from the Healthy Communities. That's really gonna help. And that's just another great opportunity for us to work together with other people. We have the same goal in mind is to keep everybody a little bit healthier and have a better, healthier community. And I think it's working. So thanks to the mayor too for setting that up too. That was fantastic.
Sure. Thank you all. Mr. McCarron?
Yeah, I have enjoyed this evening actually quite a bit with all of the folks that have taken your time to come. Once again, thank you, Russ, for, for coming and spending time with us tonight and letting us know about the Adjustment folks. And we're gonna have a little mock city council meeting immediately following our adjournment this evening. I do want to say, you know, I, I actually, I need to give my sympathies to Tegan because she's gonna take my place tonight here in the mock election. Or mock city council meeting, I'm sorry. And I just think it's also very great that each and every one of the kids that come up here, whether it's through the Yukon Coalition, Yan, yeah, Coalition. Or, or the folks that are coming up for the mock council meeting tonight. I think that's really super. And, and several of the other folks that are out here in the audience tonight, I've seen several people that, that I haven't seen in quite a while, so it's pretty nice. Anyway, that's pretty much, oh, if, if you do go to the, the old deal back in nineteen oh eight, I will pay the four dollars.
He's above fifty, he's exempt.
Okay. So that's, that's all for me.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Bottom pointed out that he thought you were above fifty, so you would be exempt. I'll need proof of ID on that. I think we should.
I'm above fifty, I'm exempt.
Yeah, I figured he probably heard me before he gave that option.
Well, Grayson said he got scooped by Conrad once. I got scooped five times on everything that I want to say. Someone's already said it. But I would like to mention on the Chill Your Cheeks, it's a grilling race. It, it's, it's something to be active and be involved. It's, it's getting healthy. It's a great celebration. It opens the park. There's tons of people there. There's great things to do. Come and be a part of it. Mr. Gerba said that he wanted to volunteer tonight. So even if you don't want to run, Jan, there are a lot of people that you, if you get with the parks and rec, you can come and help and, and just be part of that great, great celebration. And then, and in echoing what Grayson had to say about his story, I, I agree about being involved in the community and, and we can't force you, but again, I would remind you, out in front of your house, sweep up, clean up. If you see some trash laying around, pick it up. It's a great place to live, but it can only be made better by you if you take some ownership in it. It's your city. Take some pride in it and do something positive to move us forward. So with that and no other business before this council, we stand adjourned.